Good evening. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of July 9, 2024. May I have a roll call, please?
Present at this time is Ms. White, I have myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, Mr. Bowen, and Mr. Sullivan, absent tonight is Mr. Bessie and Sherri Quirk.
Thank you. Norma Scoggan's hand is raised, and that's going to be Sherri Quirk. Could you let her in, please? So I declare that there is a quorum present. Jay Fizz, how about the Pledge of Allegiance? You said it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its throne.
Thank you. Residents' comments.
Ms. Quirk has entered the meeting.
Yep. Is there, is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address this board? Please raise your hand. I see none. Okay, announcements. We do have two young men who will be Eagle Scouts on Thursday. We do have certificates for them. I previously asked if any of you can go to that ceremony at 6:00 at Upper Cape. I can't do it, and Jared can't do it, and I'm guessing that Ron will not be able to do it. Are either one of you able to, ladies?
No, I'm afraid I can't.
Okay.
I cannot either.
Okay, then I'll let, I'll let Mr. Carmen know. We already have the certificates. Mr. Chadwick, would you read into the record the, the two certificates, please?
Yes, of course. From the Wareham Select Board, Wareham, Massachusetts. "Awards this certificate of congratulations to Braden Correa. This certificate is presented in honor of you receiving the Boy Scouts highest award of Eagle Scout. As a recent UCT engineering graduate, your project consisted of upgrading and doing a great amount of work on the fitness trail located in the back of the campus. Since the establishment of the Eagle Scouts Honor in 1912, only about 2% of eligible scouts are able to attain the rank of Eagle Scout. In order to achieve this rank, the scout must have earned at least 21 merit badges, including citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world. The candidate must have completed an Eagle project which benefits any religious institute, school, or their community. Becoming an Eagle Scout demonstrates many attributes, including experimental learning and personal growth. Your hard work and efforts to help those in need is admirable. We congratulate you and commend you for your commitment to the Boy Scouts of America. Present on this day, the 11th of July 24. Sign the Select Board."
Excellent, and the second one, please?
Yes. "From the Wareham Select Board, where the certificate of congratulations to Jonathan Mel. This certificate is presented in honor of you receiving the Boy Scouts highest award of Eagle Scouts. As a recent UCT engineering graduate, your project consists completely renovating the deck on the gazebo in Memorial Garden on campus. Since the establishment of the Eagle Scouts Honor in 1912, only about 2% of eligible scouts are able to attain the rank of Eagle Scouts. In order to achieve the rank, scouts must have earned at least 21 merit badges, including citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, and citizenship in the world. The candidate must have completed an Eagle Scout project which benefits any religious institute, school, or their community. Becoming Eagle Scout demonstrates many attributes, including experiential, experiential learning and personal growth. Your hard work and efforts to help those in need is admirable. We congratulate you and commend you for your commitment to the Boy Scouts of America. Presented this day, the 11th of July 2024. Sign the Boy Scouts, excuse me, signed Wareham Select Board."
Okay, thank you. There's also, there's a notification from the Division of Marine Fisheries concerning the closing, closed to shellfishing status of Buttermilk Bay. That, I believe, has been posted on the website under the DNR website. But it means Hideaway Cove and Buttermilk Bay are closed to all shellfishing. It's because of, it's a conditional, conditionally approved classification as opposed to approved. Announcements, Ms. Quirk?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. One is to just update everybody on the status of climate change legislation. I talked with you about this before. It's important to know that the Massachusetts Senate has now passed a bill, pretty long and sweeping bill, that would transfer quite a bit of authority over citing of smaller, that is, under 25-megawatt solar projects and battery projects. It would leave them with the, with the cities, but would carefully circumscribe the city's authority in terms of prescribing bylaws and procedures that the cities and towns would have to follow. So if that were to be reenacted, enacted, it would quite a bit reduce the authority of our planning on other boards to, to address solar and battery storage projects in the town. And for larger projects over 25 megawatts, those would be addressed by the state. There would be a state process and agency set up to look at those projects. And right now, it's passed the Senate. The House has not yet taken up a companion bill. It's unclear what the status is, whether one will be, or whether this legislative effort will die for the session. We'll know more within the next couple of weeks, but this is something to watch as, as we know that solar projects are, and battery projects are of tremendous concern to the people in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett, announcements?
Yes, I have a few. The Wareham Veterans Day Committee has put together a fundraiser for the parade at El Mariachi, July 22, 5:00 p.m. to closing, eat in or take out. So if you order to take out, or if you sit down to order, make sure that you say that you're there for the Wareham's Veteran Day Parade fundraiser. I also wanted to follow up on something I had mentioned in this spot before, which is about the bike racks around town and specifically downtown. And as part of the WRA now, I brought it up in that committee, and just because I had first brought it up here, I wanted to come back here, sort of close that circle. And Mr. Sullivan said that he would be working with Ken Buckland and Dave Minard to take an inventory of the current bike racks around town and look for funding to add to that inventory. So I think that there is definitely interest in expanding the number of bike racks available around town, and I definitely thank Mr. Sullivan for his initiative on that. And my husband and I went to the July 4 Antique Fair, like we do every year, and like we do every year, my husband bought something. And like I do every year, I will find someplace to put it. But it was a really good effort, and I know those people put a lot into that event every year, and it really is a signature effort here in town. So I just want to send them my kudos and thanks for putting on that fair this year again. And that's it for me.
Excellent, Mr. Chadwick?
The only thing I have is, Mr. Sullivan and I are in the process of planning our second annual Back to School Stroll, which last year we did it on Main Street, where we're going to continue to do it. Just looking for businesses that want to join and do it again this year. Like to make it bigger, better. And if anyone has ideas, please feel free to email or call myself, and I will pass along any messages and work together with Mr. Sullivan on making this heck of a lot bigger than last year.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I have been asked by the Recycling Committee to read the following into the record. "On behalf of the Recycling Committee Volunteers in the town of Wareham, we would like to congratulate Marilyn and Earl Russell on their retirement and thank them for their many years of service. Marilyn assumed the duties of a coordinator in 2007, and several years later, Earl became a volunteer and an integral part of the recycle center's operations. The Russells not only kept the center running smoothly, but worked consistently and tirelessly to improve the operations and outreach of the recycling center for the committee, community. We wish them the best in their next ventures and adventures." The Recycling Committee signed it. And so obviously, there's a vacancy on this committee. And one of the things that I would like to say is that there are vacancies on many boards and committees, and they are listed on the town website. I know that Ms. Corbett has been busily working to get some volunteers for the Board of Library Trustees, and there are several, several committees that need populating or additional members. It's on the agenda later for discussion, but we have nothing to discuss. The Sewer Commissioners lifted the moratorium on June 15 on a conditional basis. They are allowing new residential construction additions to residences and the 40Bs, which are sewed by right or come in by right. I know it's on their agenda for this Thursday to discuss again, so I would simply urge you to watch that meeting if you choose to. Derek, are you going to talk about the Police Department news? The Telecommunication Emergency Response Task Force?
No, I, I didn't bring that up.
Okay. Then if it's okay with you, the Wareham Police Department has two communication officers that are members of the Massachusetts Telecommunicator Emergency Response Task Force, which is called TURT. Communication Supervisor Sabina Flaherty and Communications Officer Scott McDaniel represent the Wareham Police Department on this statewide task force. The TURT program has been developed in partnership with the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, another acronym, and the State 911 Department, statewide Office of Public Safety Interoperability, and the Massachusetts Chapter of the National Emergency Member Association. This is demonstrating how our police officers take the initiative to join into things that will benefit the town as well as the region, and I just want to say congratulations to them. The Friends of the Wareham Library had another successful book sale. They have them monthly. But what they really need are some more volunteers, and that's a 501(c)(3) ward. It's separate from the town of Wareham, but it supports the library in many, many important ways. And... I read that one. Okay. And really important, and I want a lot of people to be aware of this one. Town Council will be teaching a class, which is titled "How to Write a Board Decision." This would consist of advice as to how to write a board decision and analysis of what steps a board must take prior to making a decision, so that it will withstand any subsequent judicial review. So members of our adjudicatory boards and the staff that support them are encouraged to participate. Of course, any town official or employee would be welcomed, and this is going to be held on July 25 at 5:00 p.m. in Room 27. Okay, so I think you probably should respond to our office just to make sure that you don't have to move it to a different room if there are going to be a whole lot of people doing it. But thank you, Mr. Bowen, for doing that. I think it's important that we, that we get some, get some guidance on how to write some of the things that, that will be coming at us and have been coming at us. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Norma Scoggan, please raise your hand. I'm going to bounce to item 9E, which is a discussion and possible vote to request a financial management review from the Massachusetts Division of Local Services. Ms. Scoggan is Chair of the Finance Committee, and it is their request, but she will be addressing it. So when you are live, Ms. Scoggan, if you would just let us know, et cetera.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. At our last meeting of the last fiscal year, in, at the end of June, the committee took up a matter that we've actually been bouncing around for a while and that I've been discussing with Mr. Sullivan for a while. This was a suggestion made at an Association of Town Finance Committees meeting that I went to in April by the Department, the Division of Local Services, and that is that there's a free service provided by DLS to take a look at any town's situation, talk with Select Board members, town administrator, department heads, and so forth, to see whether there are places where we could find improvement in our, in our financial management in particular. There actually are several different areas where you can get this kind of review, but as Finance Committee, we are interested in financial management. This was something that was done last in 2010, and it did ultimately result in, I believe, at least indirectly, creating new financial policies, which have led to a great improvement in our bond rating and overall, some things that happened, some advice to Mr. Sullivan, and so forth, that I think proved helpful. And while there's not, we're not really in the same situation we were back then. We're, I think, in much better, on much, much better footing. As I think everyone knows, we are constantly agonizing over how we are going to pay all our bills, how, how we are going to bring in new revenue, how we're going to maximize a situation where we have limited options and lots of obligations. And of course, we have some very big matters looming, like sewer improvements and so forth. So we, in addition, we have the expectation that we're going to lose some of our most senior people in the next few years, and the committee's conclusion was that it would be useful to have another set of eyes come in and provide some guidance on best practices, on things other towns might be doing. We can't expect Mr. Sullivan to think of every single thing that we could possibly do better. And it's our hope that this would be helpful. It would not be at a cost to the town. And while we can't require anyone to do this, the Select Board has to request it if it's going to happen, we urge the Select Board to do so.
I just want to make one correction. In 2010, Mr. Sullivan was not here.
I understand.
Okay, so he was able to use things on a later basis, but I just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Scoggan? Raise your hand. Sarah, Ms. Corbett?
I think this is a great idea. It actually was mentioned when Ms. Quirk and I went to the conference for newly elected Select Board members. When would this come about? And I agree wholeheartedly with you that this is no reflection. I think our current financial managers, including Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Foster, have done a tremendous job about getting us into a really solid financial setting. But I also agree with you that it always helps to have a set of fresh eyes, look at things, and to have a greater knowledge and context of the world around us and how other things might benefit the town. When would this take place?
At the time that I attended the conference, which was in April, we, I was told by Sean Cronin, or we were told by Sean Cronin, that it would happen within three or four months. It would start within three or four months of a request, a formal request. So this is not something that will be done next week. We're talking several months to start the process, go through it, and get a product from the Division of Local Services.
So you sort of addressed my next question, but about how long would the process take once it gets underway?
I think that depends on what, what the scope ends up being, and that is negotiable.
Okay, hi, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll ask you if you choose to weigh in.
Are you just trying to kill time? I've already... I was a part of the Finance Committee at the meeting when they, they requested it. I, I have no issues with the, I think the last time it was about five months, once it got going, before we got a, a product back. So I would say all told, you're looking between nine months to a year or so, once, once a request goes in.
There are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Chadwick? Which you can basically weed off the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I move to request a financial management review from the Massachusetts Division of Local Services.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to request the review from the Massachusetts Division of Local Services? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much, Ms. Scoggan. Now, for somebody who spent how many hours gardening today? Go ahead, rehydrate. Put your feet up.
I am.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick, we have a bunch of reappointments. Can you set a land speed record, sir?
I'm going to try. I'm just letting you know right now, I, I just got Invisalign, so I'm really having a hard time trying to read a lot of stuff. I'm stuttering. And stuff's not coming out the way it used to, so. All right. I move for a reappointment to the Mine and Forest Committee, Autumn Wood, with a term to expire June 30, 2029.
Is there a second to that motion? I must hear the motion, the second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Ms. Wood. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, and I ask you to all keep your mics live so we can really get going. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next?
I move to reappoint Cheryl Knapp as a member to the Historical District Commission with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint Ms. Knapp. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Just for the record, so that everyone in the audience knows, all of the paperwork is in hand in the office. They have been recommended by their respective committees, and they have filled out applications, et cetera. Mr. Chadwick, next?
I move for a reappointment to the Historical District Commission, Patricia Neal, as a member with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, for, just to make sure, he said historic, not historical. Is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk? Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next?
I move for a reappointment to the Cemetery Commissioners, Kathleen Byrd, as a reappointment, as a member with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint. I will note that both of these people currently serve, and we are actually taking the opportunity to make sure that the rotation on this three-member board goes, you know, a year, a year, and then the following year. So this, this staggering is at their request as well. Any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next?
I move for a reappointment of Jack Silver to the Cemetery Commissioners with a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to appoint Jennifer Gady as a member, reappointment to the Recycle Committee with a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to reappoint Amanda Cobb as a member to the Carver Wareham Regional Refuse, Refuse Disposal District, term to expire June 30, 2027.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Next?
I move to appoint Lawrence Perry as Associate Member, reappointment to the Board of Health Committee with a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Ladies, come on. Is a motion made and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion for reappointment of Mr. Perry? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We have no hearings, we have no licenses and permits. We do have town business discussion and possible vote to approve the onset Cape Verdean Festival Association application, which is closing off some streets. Just so that everyone understands, they also have asked the town administrator for the use of town property, but this would fall under our Aegis. Mr. Chadwick, can you read it into the record, please?
Yes. Discussion and possible vote to approve the onset Cape Verdean Festival Association application to close off a portion of Union Avenue for the Cape Verdean Festival event at the onset Ban, Shell, and Bluffs on August 10, 2024, with a rain date of August 11, 2024, pending all department approvals and permissions of the town administrator.
Is there a second to the motion?
I move.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All of the paperwork is in order. They delivered there one day, insurance binder the other day, so if you have any questions, the paperwork is in order, and I don't know, Mr. Sullivan, you probably have given them permission for parking in certain areas, is that correct? Yes, okay, excellent. Any further discussion on the motion to grant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, so regularly, we get sign, temporary sign applications. Regularly, they come in, you know, a couple of weeks before they want to put them out, and because we're on an every other week application basis, sometimes they're not getting approved in a timely fashion. My suggestion is to authorize the chair and/or the clerk to sign any and all temporary sign applications. Those are the ones like for the fair, or for the festivals, or, you know, a garden club event, something like that. These are the signs that go on town property only. I don't know, I'll leave it up to you to figure out whether you think it's a good idea or not.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, if it speeds up a, a process, I'm all for it, yep.
Yeah, it keeps it off the agenda, and it also helps the people who come in late to get what they need.
I see no downside.
I'm sorry? You see no downside?
Oh, sorry.
That's correct, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, may I have a motion, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to authorize the chair and/or the clerk of the Select Board to sign all temporary sign applications in order to provide prompter service to the public.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you. Discussion and possible vote to amend the start time for the Parkwood Beach Association Beach Party. This is, Ms. Burke came in the other day, and she needs to amend the opening time from 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m. to make sure that all of the setup is available. So this has previously been approved, we just need to amend the hours. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion, please?
I move to amend the start time for Parkwood Beach Association Beach Party event on August 10, 2024, from 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m., per Susan Burke's request.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, we did E. We're not gonna do G. So, Mr. Sullivan, you're on for a discussion and possible vote to authorize year-end transfers within the budget, as well as the update on the ARPA, including a possible vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. I have the letter in front of me. Can we have a sharing turned on?
Sure. Noah?
Also.
Thank you.
All right, so, just to let you know, just giving you an update, um, there's a letter that you'll receive, but if you look at the grid in the section, these are the four items that we used for the ARPA allocation. The first one was Damian's Food Pantry, 50,000 towards that. We have expended the full 50,000, and that status is complete. Uh, next one was the Wong Kinko Sewer Project, which was voted, or an amount allocated of 3.75 million. Uh, that came in slightly under, which is good, 3,621,241.94. So that leaves us about, uh, well over 128,000. Um, the next item is sewer aeration blowers. We have awarded the contract, and those are being built. And the total cost for those, we anticipated 210,000, uh, because Sewer Department was gonna be paying a portion of it. They're coming in about 200,000, so still well within budget. Uh, and then the next one is the Bayview Park ADA Path and Park Upgrades. That's the park right by the, uh, Bath House and, uh, the, uh, the onset pier. So we've awarded, and they're going to start a September start date. There were, the amount allocated was $100,000 to that. It's, uh, so that's an over $2 million project. So in looking at this, well, it's great that the, uh, sewer project came in under budget. We don't want to lose those, uh, those funds, 128,000. We'd like to expend them. So we can no longer do new projects. So what I'm suggesting is that we reallocate the funds for the, uh, for this to the, uh, Bayview Park ADA Path, uh, upgrades.
So that would add that amount to the, to that, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, and this is the, you know, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funds that communities had received. Uh, sewer was a big one that they were looking for, so you can see an intensive sewer. That was a great, great use of it. So what I'm asking, if the, if the select board is okay with it, is the motion be made? I move that the select board reaffirm the previously approved ARPA projects, because we don't want to do away with those, and amend the funding as follows. Damian's Food Pantry, 50,000. Wong Kinko Sewer, Wong Kinkoa Sewer Project, 3,621,241.94. The sewer aeration blowers, 186,848.53. Bayview Park, um, path, park upgrades for the, that has it on 200. That should be, um, the one. That is incorrect, so that should be the, should be 228,758.6.
Say again?
On that?
Yeah, Jared, it's, uh, 228,
Are there any questions of Mr. Sullivan before I accept a motion? Well, I probably should accept a motion. Mr. Chadwick, may I have a motion first, please?
Uh, yeah, can, Mr. Sullivan, can you?
Read it right off the top.
Jared, I've got it on the screen in front of you.
Right in the top line, buddy.
Oh, hey, sweet, there we go. See, this is why I love you. Uh, I move that the select board reaffirm the previously approved ARPA projects and amend the funding as follows. Damian's Food Pantry, 50,000.
Wong Kinkoa.
Wong Kinkoa Sewer Project. Sewer aeration blowers, 186,848.53. Bayview Park ADA Path Park Upgrades, 228,758, and was it 6 cents?
Yes.
All right.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any questions of Mr. Bu- uh, Mr. Sullivan? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Is there something we need to sign, Derek?
No, um, I just need these, uh, minutes done sooner rather than later, so I can submit the application. Uh, I'm going to put in for the Damian's and the Wong Kinko project as soon as that last, the, the payment's done, they've requested it, the project's done. As soon as those are all done, these have to be reimbursements, I can request those funds, uh, back, it's because it's a reimbursement. And then I'll do the same for the next two projects. And the first cost for the Bayview Park in September will be out of the, uh, ARPA grant. So we can be sure we're taking care of them, because we need to expend these funds by, uh, by this fall.
Okay, we, the person who does the minutes is on vacation. We'll be back next week, so we'll get them out as soon as we can next week. That's okay?
You know, yeah, that, that'll be fine. Uh, that'll work out okay.
Okay, great, thank you. And how about the discussion and possible, oh, can you send a copy of that, please, to us, um, email? Yeah.
I just got a picture, Judith.
Huh?
I got a picture of it.
Okay, but we need to send it. Yeah.
Just let me, let me update it with the people around there.
Yep. And the discussion and possible vote for the year-end transfers within the budget, sir?
We didn't need, uh, the additional ones. You've already voted upon them.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
Right, you did, uh, the, the previous mo- I didn't attend, or? Didn't you already do that on the last meeting?
No. Did we? No. Well, wait a second. We have the minutes right here. 6:18, no, we would have had 7:09, right? We don't have those minutes.
Okay.
Today, 7:09. What am I talking about? Yeah.
Okay, uh, so then, did you get them from the town accountant, the transfers?
No, but we are meeting tomorrow at 6:00, so can we do them tomorrow night?
Yeah, just hold off for one, yeah, go on something else. Let me see what I can find.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chadwick, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes, sir.
I move to accept the minutes of select board meeting minutes of 6:40, 2024, and select board meeting minutes of 6:18, 2024.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve both sets of minutes. Any further discussion on the motion to approve those minutes?
I, um, I'm sorry, I, I noted a couple of, um, errors in the, uh, minutes for the first meeting. Although I'm not sure, um, how these items are normally treated, but there, uh, during the discussion of earth removal, I think I made a motion to raise, or to amend the contract. And, um, Ms. Corbett, uh, seconded for purposes of discussion. Um, I think it's, um, reflected as there having been no, no, uh, second. We did have a discussion, and then ultimately voted to, um, maintain the contract as it was. And then I think later, Ms. Corbett asked to bring this issue back for further discussion. Um, I think none of that is captured in the minutes. My question would be, um, I, I mean, those seem to me to be errors, albeit small errors, and, uh, so I'm asking for guidance on what should happen with this.
Okay, so we can correct the minutes right now, and we can approve them as corrected. So on page three, it would say seconded.
Yes.
And then, um.
And I think the-
There's, so there would have been a vote. So let's, let's hold off on these minutes, because I've got to go back and that, that requires a little bit more than a, than a sentence. So let's hold off on that one. Mr. Chadwick, can you withdraw your motion, please?
Yeah, which one was that? The 6:4?
That was the A.
The earlier one.
That's the, yeah.
All right, yeah, so 6:4. I, uh, I withdraw the, uh, 6:4, 2024.
Okay, so you still have a motion to approve?
The meeting minutes, I'm, all right, so I move to approve the meeting minutes of 6:18, 2024.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that one? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Um, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. In the future, I would suggest that if you have suggestions like that, that you make them before we get to the meeting, because we can always just substitute the corrected version.
I will do that.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have the, um.
Excellent. Go ahead. Yeah.
So you'll see that the first one is from the debt principal. It will be transferring 35,000 to FICA. That's the Medicare tax that we pay as employers for the 1.45% of payroll. So the updated budget amount will be 630,000. Uh, unforeseen payouts for some of the employees that have left, cost increase from union retros and raises that were, that weren't, it says anticipated, that's anticipated, obviously. Um, the other one is debt, uh, long-term principal, that's what the LT means. Uh, 15,000 to the workers' comp line, uh, which is, uh, updated budget 465,000. And we had that mid-year audit, which had caused an increase. And, uh, we were off by the 15,000, so we're transferring over. It's actually 12,000 and change, but we'll make the transfer just to, to make sure. The ironic part is then the FY25, um, workers' comp, uh, the, the cost from the carrier went down. So as, as far as the audit goes, it was, it was a little shocking, so.
So I remember seeing this form. Does anybody?
I thought you'd done this, but maybe we just emailed it to you, and that's why you saw it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I've seen it. Have the, yeah, any of the others, have you seen it?
I don't remember seeing it.
Okay, so then-
I don't remember it either.
Okay, so then let's have a motion, please, to approve it.
I move to authorize year-end transfer within the budget as stated by Mr. Sullivan.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as presented. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Cor- Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, town administrators report. Mr. Sullivan?
Madam Chair, just so everybody knows, the, um, year-end transfers through the Municipal Relief Act some years back allows you to, you only used to be able to do a certain percentage from lines, uh, as they're trying to correct things. We're allowed within the last 15 day, or the first 15 days of the next fiscal year to make transfers, because you're not allowed to end up with any budgets in a deficit. Uh, you know, deficits, uh, specifically more from, from these, what happens is you have to raise them on the recap, and you get your free cash reduced, so it's almost a double hit for that fiscal year. That's why, uh, you can be sensitive to the, uh, the deficits. So what you're doing is within your authorization, and the Finance Committee can vote to transfer from, uh, these funds out. We like to transfer from the lines rather than the, uh, than, uh, from the Finance Committee Reserve, because that's more for emergency purposes, so. Uh, cool background.
Okay, excellent. Your, your report, sir?
July 4th on a Thursday was certainly interesting, so you almost had a full, uh, felt like a full week of July 4th festivities. Uh, obviously, the town was, town was packed. Uh, you know, we had really a lot of traffic going from, it was going all the way to, uh, I think in some cases, Wareham Center from, uh, from onset, but I'll tell you, it was still a lot better than the 11-mile backups on, off the Cape in some of the, the cases. And I watched 495, uh, backed up to, uh, Mansfield on, uh, on Thursday. So it was, it was pretty incredible. Uh, I appreciate everybody's hard work. Looks like it was a successful 4th. Uh, you know, interesting weather we're having. Some of the fog that came out later on in the, the week, towards this weekend, was, was impressive. And I think, uh, I know one town that had a complete fireworks show ruined by, uh, by that fog. They were going off, and you could not see a single firework, so it's, uh, that's, uh, that's the nature of, uh, trying to deal with weather. So hopefully, we'll, we'll continue to have some nice weather, and we'll get a break from this heat. So, and just in case anybody doesn't know, during times of real heat, uh, you know, there's, there's obviously, you, you open up some of the cooling centers when it's gonna be a true heat wave in our area, you know, greater than 90 days for, for several days in a row. But, um, at any time, the library, which is open to the public, is available, and that's, uh, that's cooling. And where are we anticipating having a new cooling system, hopefully, in the near future, after we have the funding? The, uh, multi-service center has, is cooled, and, uh, especially in the, the, uh, sewer gymnasium area, and the town hall and the auditorium is cooling. So anytime, uh, somebody needs to break, beat the heat, if they don't have it at home, you're, you know, you're more than welcome during those hours, even if there's no cooling center, so.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. Um, I know that many people have made this suggestion, and I'm sure that Mr. Chadwick can vouch for this. Make sure that if you have neighbors who are elderly and may or may not have air conditioning, that you check on them and make sure that they are well hydrated, Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, so I, I was just gonna add on to that. Um, with the, the weather being the way it has been, uh, I've definitely seen firsthand a huge increase in, uh, with all due respect, the elderly population. Uh, bringing them to the hospital, and I have to tell you, I'm really good at IVs, but some of the pneumatics are not. So if you want to be a pincushion, don't drink water, uh, and have a fun time sitting at the hospital for six, seven, eight hours waiting for them to see you, because Toby Hospital, Cape Cod Hospital, Falmouth Hospital, this time of year all have great waiting times with great waiting places. Drink water, it's really easy. If you don't want water, Pedialyte, uh, Gator Light is a new one. Just drink, 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 water. And yes, I'm guilty, because I haven't done that there, so I definitely got an IV the other day.
Okay, thanks. Um, Mr. Sullivan, you're all set, right? Okay, um, the liaison initiative reports, Ms. Corbett?
Um, I've just gotten underway with some of my liaisons, um, and I can reiterate that Recycling Committee is one of my liaison appointments, and they're a great group of people, and they do need committee members. Um, also, Council on Aging Board of Directors, also a hardworking, great group of people. Um, they also need new members, um, and I'm not a liaison with the Friends of Library, but I am a member. And they're a great group of people, really fun, kind, welcoming group of people, and they would welcome new members as well. And, um, listening to Mr. Sullivan talk about the weather this 4th of July, it was a flashback to when my husband and I did the, uh, Wareham fireworks for many years, and there were years that we had colored clouds as our firework display, and those were not happy memories. But 4th of July was always a very stressful, look Corbett household, and, um, yeah, we don't do that anymore, and I'm sure Kat Jones has had her share of stressful 4ths as well. Um, I did want to mention, uh, Jared and I both got a email from a resident of North Water Street in onset, um, talking about the parking and traffic issues on that road, and- and traffic issues on that road, and I had several other people reach out to me as well. I took a drive down there. It is a complex problem. The Wareham Land Trust owns a small beach. There's a larger beach that the residents of the Sandy Beach Association use, but there is a small beach, the North Water Street Beach, that is a Wareham Land Trust property. And it is a problem that needs to be addressed, and it is a complex one. And I will say, at this point, I am not complaining, I am explaining, because I have offered my ideas to the residents of that street as to how we should move forward and to solve this problem, because I, I do think it needs to be solved, and the solution I had thought would include putting this on a future agenda item and bringing all the interested parties in, together in this complex problem, and coming to a solution together. And I have found out, that's not the way things work. There is a system in this town for addressing those issues, and so now this problem will be addressed within that system, and I'm not going to blurt out what I thought I heard in terms of what that process is like. I want to double-check it, and then I will reach out directly to the people that reached out to me directly, and tell them what the next steps are moving forward on, on having that problem addressed. So, I did want to spend a little time talking about that, because I've talked to a lot of people, and, and they find it a very intractable problem, one that's impacting their quality of life. And I think there's a solution that a lot of people can agree on, but it's not going to be gotten to the way I thought it would be. But I do think it will be addressed at some point, so. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
I just wanted to note that we've talked a bit over recent weeks about the open meeting law, the importance of adherence to the open meeting law, and the need of our committees and boards to, to be vigilant in this regard. And I know with some of the committees that I'm liaison with, I've started talking about, about this, and I had a suggestion. I know that people often file open meeting law complaints in an effort to inspire better, better governance and, and better practices. I had asked for some moments of grace now, because I think that, that our committees are, have many things on their plates, and I think it would be good to take a little bit of time to absorb what has been asked of them, and to the extent that, that members of the public notice any open meeting law violations that you, as, as the law suggests or requires, you take those up directly with the chair of the, the relevant board or committee, and that we give ourselves some grace as we absorb these lessons and try to get better at doing this. And a second thing I would say is the seminar that Attorney Bowen is going to hold on drafting decisions and developing records that will enable Mr. Bowen to do the best job that he can in defending the decisions of our various boards is really critically important. And that our boards work really hard and put a lot of time and effort into hearing cases and making decisions, sometimes very tough decisions. And given all of that work and energy, it's worthwhile to hear what Mr. Bowen has to say and put the extra effort into developing records and drafting decisions that will make the decisions of the board stick. And so, I would say as an attorney, although not one that can practice in Massachusetts, that, that makes all the difference in the world. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chadwick.
I have nothing else for tonight.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any others either. So. Anything else? We don't have 48-hour business. I want to remind you all that we are meeting tomorrow at 6:00, and we will have, you have already gotten the agenda. It will be Zoom, and I'm presuming that it'll be no more than maybe 15 or 20 minutes, and so. Mr. Chadwick?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, it is not debatable. I will do a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and good night. 7:55.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.